... the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is to approve the minutes from May fifteenth. Would you like to read those to us, please?
Thank you, Sharon. Yeah, we did meet on, uh, May fifteenth. Those present were Brian, Sharon, and John. Corey and Dave were absent. We recited the pledge. Councilman President, Sharon made, chaired the meeting. Uh, Brian moved with a second by John to approve the May first minutes, all in favor of the proposition. Councilman Corso moved with a second by Brian to approve the consent, all in favor. Brian moved with a second by Corso to approve the regular agenda with the addition of the Director of the Administration, Paul Focasi, all in favor. Mr. Focasi asked the Board to approve the two thousand seventeen tax rule reflecting an increase of three percent. Schmidt moved second by John to approve. The contract with that control approved by John, second by Brian. On said Pritchard. Councilman Corso moved a second by Schmidt to table the rezon and preliminary plat that leaves acres second, all in favor. Brian moved a second by John to approve a resolution setting land use code fees, all in favor, passed. Brian moved a second by Corso to approve the street improvement projects seventeen, four, five, six, seven, eight, all in favor. Interstate Engineering, Mr. Dolman presented a monthly update on engineering projects. A priority item is the installation of new water meters which would allow electronic units. The preliminary cost estimate was tabled until June fifteenth. Portfolio, Sharon, Volunteer of the Year tabled until June five, led discussion on a crosswalk at Cass, that, uh, excuse me, well, at Cass Seventeen, and especially in progress relating to bringing back vehicles. John, concerns regarding the planting of trees on the whole of our area. How is the city currently handling, how the city's currently handling both these requests? Both items will be discussed further tonight. Brian reported that the cleanup day went well with only minor concerns. Aaron reported that Stanley Township will pay for gravel and grading on Wall Avenue, west of the bridge, as well as for the Lost River. The city will cover the cost of chemical for dust control. Adam, discussion regarding the preliminary orders related to fireworks. Councilman Corso moved a second by Brian to approve a minimum monetary penalty for not following the orders. Auditor Kemer reported that all contracts had been signed and submitted for the collection of our citywide sales tax revenue. Uh, Councilman moved a second by Brian to designate Fargo Forum as the, uh, the owner's paper. Resumes are coming in for Assistant Auditor and Tax Assistant. The next board meeting will be on June fifth, when we adjourn at nine thirty-four.
Any changes?
No, looks good.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda and vendor invoices for the season. Any questions on the invoices?
Yeah, I wanted to KPH, what, uh, dates is that of the project? Is that like the first payment or second, second? So far, one, are they then?
Oh, they are about forty percent.
Most of the first one, wasn't that something like?
Couple hundred thousand.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Hundred fifty, hundred and fifty thousand.
Alright, so this one's much bigger, okay.
Yeah, this covers all the sand dries through all the water and the services for each. So, plus materials stored on hand for their storms who are piping.
So is this, this is about half of the project cost?
Uh, the project is three point four, three point five million.
So it's about a third?
Yeah.
Okay. So when is the next payment due?
Typically do a monthly.
Oh, it's monthly?
That's when I bring them in, usually. First meeting of the month is when I try to bring the estimates in.
Yep.
And this is for work that's completed to date.
Okay.
I see on here there's a cost for the, to the city of Fargo for lab testing, is that a monthly cost?
That's actually weekly.
Two hundred and ten, oh, seventy, oh, no.
Seventy dollars a week.
Yeah.
Per week. That's for the river edge stuff.
Is that river edge? And isn't, or isn't that for our city water too? Or is it just river edge? Oh, okay, okay.
But tonight's, uh, is for rivers.
Okay. And the GeoHaggard, is that the, the relining project, is that the last payment?
No.
Uh, no. There's one more?
There will be at least one more, if not two or three.
Okay.
Probably three. Just in the way things get.
We're still within budget on that one?
As of right now, yep. We'll talk about that in the update.
Okay, okay.
Moved to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next on the agenda is to approve the regular agenda.
Oh, is this, is Mr. Bissell here? Or how about, uh?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
Good timing.
How about Dean O from Stark? Okay.
And they're on the agenda?
Yes.
So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Excuse me, one more thing. Mr. Lance, are you here? Nice to meet you. How about H?
I'm here.
I don't know these people, so before we approve it.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Next lady on the agenda is the police report. Gentlemen, you're up.
Did you want to go through the monthly report first, or did you want to go through the other?
Okay.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so this month we had a hundred and five calls for service. It's up about thirty from last month. Um, a lot of that is the nice weather and stuff, would be my guess. So, um, there's two crashes, one reckless driving, four juvenile complaints, five animal calls, six alcohol-related incidents, um, eight medicals, twenty-three citations, and sixty-nine warnings, um, no parking tickets, and four drug-related calls. Um, go through those, a lot of those were traffic stops. There wasn't any specific, uh, locations for those either, so, um.
The crashes, where were those located? On County Seventeen, or are they outside in the residential areas?
Um, they would be, gosh, I don't know. Did you take any of those?
The only one I took was on the interstate.
On the interstate, okay.
Okay.
I'd have to look. I don't remember for sure where.
It wasn't, it wasn't a case where there was any bodily injury or injuries, real injury-related accident?
It didn't look like any of them were injury-related.
Okay, alright. That was key point, making sure there's nobody getting, getting hurt on our main road, so.
Yeah. Um, and then fourteen of those calls are traffic complaints, and seventeen of, seventeen of them are for deputies attempting warrants. Um, no notable calls for service this month either. Um, and then recently had that, uh, Sex Bender moved into the area. I sent you guys an email, the media release for that. Um, basically just notifying you guys that he's here and his address and stuff like that, so. It's four oh seven Nelson Drive.
A question on that. I noticed that it was published in the forum as well.
Yep.
Uh, is there precedent for publishing this elsewhere, or is this typically the process for, you know, letting this, letting residents know through, you know, this council meeting, or what, what's the normal process for notifying residents?
Um, the ads up for that?
Yeah, um, talking to one of our supervisors, they said that if you wanted to hold a public meeting, you could do that. Uh, then we would have one of our detectives that handles the Sex Bender registration come and they're a little bit more up to date on the do's and don'ts of sharing information on that, so.
It's not a, not a requirement by any means, but so it's an optional thing?
Right, that's why I get released to the media, so that that's the element, everybody is aware of it. Um, but if you guys wanted to hold a separate meeting, you absolutely could.
And even the, the thing that I, that I emailed you guys there, um, even that's something that could just be given us, it was sent to the media, so that could be published in your guys' course at me.
Or can it be put on our website, or whatever?
That's, I, was kind of my question a little bit to, what point is it too much information? Is it, what can we post on our website versus what publish in the paper? I, I don't know what the procedure is or what we're allowed to do, so that's why I'm asking.
And from what I was told, um, everything that you have right there on that handout, that's all stuff that was sent to the media, so that's all public knowledge that we have to relay to the community when, when they're going out, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it was on the TV news, too.
Yeah, so it's just, we have to do our due diligence to notify the public that they're here.
Okay.
Jesse, I think we actually have two here.
There is two? Yeah. Yeah, I think we're right on that. And all those can be found too, um, in that email for sure, and maybe on there. There's a website that you can see all of them there.
Okay. Alright, so it's, it would be okay for us if we put some information on the website for residents to refer to and point, most likely point people to this, this website if they're, they want to dig in more.
Yeah.
Probably when everybody gets the form.
I, right, I just didn't, I don't know what the procedure is or what we're allowed to do legally, so I didn't want to, you know, do something and then get in trouble later.
Yeah, I guess to my understanding, that's the purpose for the, the state website, is because they tend to move around a lot, from what I've been told, and so that's why they state keep shackling them, so.
But no issues with the, even with the individuals?
No, no, no issues at all on our end, it's just, we keep track of them, so.
Okay.
And yeah, again, it could just be is, just telling them that they're in the area and directing to the website.
Okay, alright.
And then for, any questions on that?
No.
Nope? Um, then for the rest of the report, um, we both sent, we both attended the city council meeting last month and the patrol meeting last month. Um, I attended the Maple Family Dental event that they had there. Um, looked like there was a big turnout for that, too. There was a ton of kids there and stuff, so. And then I attended a EMR training as well this month. Um, we had, we got a little bit of information for the, um, we had that radar trailer that was in town here for about a month.
So I, I've got it displayed, do you want to just walk through it real quick?
Yep, sure. Um, so that was, uh, from April sixth to May fourth. Um, it tells you there was, um, two thou, or twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven total vehicles that came through. Average speed is twenty-seven, which I think is pretty good coming into town there. Um, maximum speed is sixty-two. That could have, um, I was told that could have been, uh.
I'm surprised.
That could have been, uh, somebody coming lights and sirens possibly through.
Oh.
Potential, so, um, I don't know for sure, but there was one of those at sixty-two, so. Um, but we have, obviously you can see that under the limit is about a third, and then over the limit was about two-thirds. Um, I did break that down a little bit further, um, just at like, anybody that was at thirty-one and above, that was about fifteen percent of cars that were coming through. And then when you jump up to thirty-five and above, that knocks it down to about five percent of cars that were coming through. So, um, I think, uh, overall, that's a pretty good number, and some of that could be too, when people are coming in, they see the radar trailer, it blinks red, white, or red and blue lights too, so some of that is them slowing down because they see that, but, um, overall, I think the twenty-seven is a pretty good speed coming into town there, so. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, if you, if you wanted to go down further, it tells you exactly how many people at each speed was coming through, so. But, uh, that's all I got for that. Any questions on that at all?
So this is okay if I publish this on the website?
Yeah.
For people to refer to?
Yeah, that's no problem. Yeah, you can see every mile.
I thought it was interesting that the traffic count, you know, twenty-two thousand in a month.
Some good information.
That's a lot of cars.
A lot of cars.
That's a lot of traffic.
Well, you know, it's, it's people going, you know.
Right. Is it, is it countable directions?
Yeah, that's the only one.
It's only southbound?
Yeah, because it's only taking pictures from that direction.
Wow. That's a lot.
Yeah, it's a busy, busy road. It's only gonna get busier, I'm sure, so.
Yeah. So there's another, is there another one planned for sometime this summer, or is there?
I think we can get it out when.
We heard we have one on County Fourteen on the west side of the Sheran. So, because of all the detour traffic, people are not sold out for you, so.
Right.
But yeah, we can, uh, we put in requests to get it put in certain areas, so if there's somewhere that you guys think that you want it, or somewhere that we see, then we can put in requests to have it moved down here, so. That's no problem at all.
Okay. So right now, it's based on the request. You give requests, they do it place. Okay.
Well, I mean, we can request it too, so.
Right, right. We can contact you guys, yeah, okay.
Do we have an update on the eighteen week boss?
Um, I got an update today. Apparently, the individual that does that's been on vacation for two weeks, so that's why I haven't heard back from him. So I'm hoping to hear something this week from him. Um, we're also just kind of started kicking off, uh, our nineteen night planning a little bit more seriously, because it's June, and we're gonna be doing it the August eighth, the second Tuesday in August. So, talked to a couple of individuals already, uh, that are gonna donate items, uh, Big Erbs is gonna donate, uh, and then I talked to Vance earlier today, too, about the city potentially donating hot dogs.
I think we should, we should talk, because we're also trying to bring back E Days or Horace Community Days, we're going to call it this year, and, um, and maybe somehow we can work together so that those things are either close to each other or not, maybe it doesn't make a difference, but.
Well, as of right now, for August eighth, we have, uh, AirMed set up that they, that date was open for them, so we said, okay, let's take that. Um, and then it's how they like SWAT would be able to provide their vehicle, you know, all these in hopes that they don't have a call up of some sort.
Excellent.
So that date's gonna work for some of those, if we do switch it. I mean, it's something we can do.
And maybe not, maybe they're finess to separate.
And I, I had talked to, uh, to Corey, too, because he had mentioned that as well, and that he wasn't sure how the B Days is gonna play out for this year, so I mean, that's something that could be maybe in the future, next year, right? That would be a good deal if you could kind of do everything in a day there.
Yeah, I think this year, as Corey and I were talking, B Days is gonna be pretty condensed. I mean, it might be like Friday night and Saturday, like, that's it. But at least that's what we're gonna try to accomplish. But anyway.
But that's all.
We'll let you guys know as soon as we get that nailed down.
That's up here.
This is me, could I have, have one thing here? Uh, in looking at the traffic report, I noticed there's a lot of warnings. Uh, and this board has realized that for the last several months, we've been trying to acquire our own judge at court out here. Um, I have a little bit of information for you on that, for you guys as well. I'm currently working with District Judge Thomas Otter Olson, who is an acquaintance of mine. Um, he thinks that there is a way that we can move Court out of Horus into District Court in Faris. So one of the judges on staff at that court could handle that. Hopefully, uh, and this just came up, just a few days ago, hopefully I'll have more information for you on children, I think, for whatever it is. So, that would solve that problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
I think that's all that we got, unless there's any other questions for us at all.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next item on the agenda is Kelly Visto, and Dean R. Spock. Kelly, want to go to the podium, and?
Well, I had a couple, um, things that I wanted, I guess I'd chatted with Vance at the bar. Um, we're possibly looking at doing a Fourth of July fireworks deal at the bar, or wherever we can, and, you know, with Star Fireworks, um, we've been talking with him about running the whole fireworks display, and he knows more. It's just something kind of sponsored by the bar.
Want to know what's required from the town, if anything. I mean, we've got the insurance, we've got the proper people that are certified to do this stuff. And it would be consumer fireworks, it wouldn't be the, uh, commercial fireworks.
We have that new ordinance that allows, um, for special use permits, so. And it's, it's July fourth, so it's still within, uh, the time frame we can do it, but yeah.
Yeah, I think the only thing that comes to mind immediately is, though, where would you do it? How close would people be to where the display is? I mean.
And that's also a new ordinance where you talk to the, the chief.
Yeah. So we just need to provide the application for the special event showing.
Yep, and then, and then talk with the chief to make sure that, that you have, you're in the proper location, and, and make sure that no one's gonna get hurt.
Right, the perimeter would be secure and the people would be.
Yeah, and that's just something that they'll go through, so they.
Sure.
They know what's, what risks there are.
But that process is defined in the permit application, right?
We have it in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, okay.
And you're thinking how long the?
About a twelve-minute display. Ten to twelve-minute display.
And you're thinking, in the street, and, I mean, give us an idea, I mean, at the park, or you?
Yeah, I mean, I don't really know.
We'd have to look at that and see and make sure that.
What's your ordinance? We didn't know what the ordinance were. We have the property south of town. Maybe you could go there, and if it's visible from, it's not mainly for the bar, I just want to kind of do it to.
Start something?
Yeah.
Maybe a new tradition?
Maybe it can be shut off at the fire department, you know, across by the water. I don't know, and, you know, maybe in our parking lot, I really have no idea on that, but.
She does the parking lots in the north, too, at the, nicely elevator there.
Elevator, it's parking lot or something, or.
So I think we're with Lucas and the fire department and the ordinance and see.
That's gonna seep out pretty fast.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it kind of came up about three weeks ago, as I had breakfast one day, and we kind of talked about it, and, so. Kelly, I'll send you the ordinance tomorrow. It's a fifty-dollar fee.
And you could, you could find it, it's in the, the fire and prevention, it's on the screen here, so here's a, here's the details of the ordinance, so that, that tells you what, what is needed, so obviously you need to get that application in fairly soon.
Yeah.
Within the next week, or a half, sorry. Because there, there's the fifteen days advance notice, so.
Yeah. We'll get on it right away, and I guess see what the ordinance says, though.
Yep.
Closer than we, I guess if we could maybe shoot it off on, by a dumpster area, or just block, barricade that area off, I don't know, you know.
It's really gonna depend on the fire chief and the potential risk, right?
And what he knows with previous.
Right.
Sure.
If something happens with one of those, and they end up landing in somebody's backyard, that's what we don't want to have happen, right?
Uh, yeah, I think that's why we're working with the fire department, meaning if it's south of town, maybe that's, and it's visible from the bar, or, I don't know, I mean.
We're gonna take a look. I just wanted to get the foot in the door and just see what was needed, but I'll check that out.
Working with the fire department, right? That's the approval.
Yep. And it really just looks like fifteen days ahead of time, so.
We'll get it right away, though.
Yep.
With this experience, he knows if it's visible from, I guess.
I know everything, trees and. Right. The perimeter, how far people have to sit back, so you don't get any fallout on top of somebody's house.
Well, you know, in this town, you could be on one end and see fireworks all the way on the other, pretty much, so.
Lot of trees, so. So that was the one thing I was gonna talk about.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, the other issue I wanted to talk about was, um, on Sundays, the state of North Dakota allows, or at least Fargo is anyway, um, alcohol sales at eleven, and we're at noon. It doesn't seem like a big deal, but this Sunday, we had two separate people come in that left because we don't serve here until noon, and it happens about every Sunday. Um, it's kind of surprising, every weekend, every Sunday, that's something. So I was just, uh, asking if there was an opportunity to bump that up an hour like Fargo, West Fargo, and the other regions are, as far as law, and one hour earlier on alcohol sale, but that's the one I should.
Lucas, you know what the state century code is on that?
It is eleven. Remember we discussed when we, because we just revised the alcohol ordinance and we decided to keep, or the city council decided to keep it at twelve.
So all the other, is like Kindred and, what is Kindred and, like, Mableton and Castleton, are they?
Not gonna say, no, I have no idea. I'm not sure what they.
So you're, you're basically looking for us to be consistent with what West Fargo and Fargo's ordinances have?
Possibility for, I don't know, I'm not blocking, so, it's, I, I paid a little more attention to it now. Sonia brought it to my, my general manager brought it to my knowledge, and then Sunday I worked, and two people got up, and went, oh, you know, sort of moved it, and they left, so. And Sonia goes, see, I've been telling you. I guess you're right, so.
Okay.
It's, I don't know.
Okay. We could take that as a match, I am for discussion.
Yeah, just, and I don't know if the license, you know, I remember reading it back in the day, but I don't know, but. Um, one other thing.
Several years ago, uh, this, the board at the time granted nearly opening, because I believe that is the statewide law, so the city followed through that, and that's what Kelly's license says at this.
What does it say? Oh, it says that, no?
So whether or not you want to change that, what would that require?
Well, we'd have to change our ordinance first.
I, I thought, I thought it was an ordinance change, and we modified to be consistent with the state, but if cities have modified it even more to outside of the state.
I think the century code actually changed.
The century code did change, so it is eleven.
I think the state legislature voted to change the century code to move the hour, one hour earlier, and where our ordinance is written, it saves a time where it probably should just say to follow the state's century code, and then whatever that is, is what that is. And this way, we're consistent with whatever the state laws.
You're correct, what you're saying.
That's, yeah.
And that would be my understanding exactly of Brian's, how we ended up at noon, is that was, we just followed the law.
Whether it's an hour, in a month, or it's probably inevitable to, once the city gets here.
Do we need to?
I think we have.
Do we need to work, then, to start the process?
I think, I think we should.
I think you should.
I think we should update the ordinance to just follow the state law.
Exactly what you said.
And then just put those words, and then whatever that is, is then what it is.
Lucas, do you need a, a motion to review that ordinance change?
Yep. Alright, I move that we, um, allow on said Pritchard to review the, what was it, the liquor ordinance.
Yep.
Time to match, update our wording to match state law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Vance, you have the wording on that? Yeah, I think we're just going to ask.
I, I can, I'll put it in the minutes correctly.
So we can review it. If there, you know, if you get the modified ordinance, we can review it as a first reading next meeting, right? So we potentially look at the end of July, most likely for an enactment, right?
Yes, it's two months, actually.
Yeah, to keep our ordinance in line with state law.
Okay, that's fine.
Essentially is.
Kelly, you gotta wait.
Yeah, that's all good. Um, the next thing is, uh, tomorrow night, we start our bikes and classic car thing at the bar, so I don't know how it's gonna turn out. We've heard there's people coming, bringing classic cars, so, um, as far as them, would that be alright if some of the cars park on Main Street, kind of like the West Fargo, the West Fargo gig, and have their hoods open, or?
Do we have any ordinances that prevent parking?
County road, I understand, but, I mean, I don't want to do anything wrong tomorrow night and then have all these cars parked out on the street, and.
What would be, what would be needed?
If it's parked in parking spots, that's fine.
We're not blocking, it wouldn't be blocked, right?
Not, not parking in on an angle, but just.
No, just the normal parking way.
You don't think of any of the, the traffic hazards, and if it's on a parking much older, it's not gonna be a traffic hazard?
Yeah.
The only thing that would be is foot traffic, people are gonna be, lots of people are gonna be walking around checking out the cars, so it's, people are gonna have to be more cautious driving, right?
And I don't know what it's gonna turn into, um, these things have gotten big, it's our first one ever, I, I guessing it's not gonna be a huge display, but it could, I know we got a letter from a Corvette club, I think in Fargo said that they're coming like the end of June and they're gonna bring all their Corvettes, so I, I really don't know, I mean, there might be three cars there, or there might be twenty-five, or there might be fifty, and then there's bikes.
You know it's popular in West Fargo and.
Yeah, I mean, that got really big, but that's.
I'm assuming you're gonna get a few.
And then it's bikes also, and.
So do they, does West Fargo block Cheyenne Street there when they have that event? I don't think they do.
No, they don't, but they're wider, they can.
You can drive through that.
You can drive through it, it's just wider, so.
Right, right.
I feel like a consideration would be don't park in front of a fire wall.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, do we need barricades or something like that to make sure that nobody parks in those areas to, that's.
I will be out there and make, you know, make sure nobody hits, I don't think we'll have a problem with it, but we'll see.
I don't think they're gonna let someone park in front of that, nor do I think the firemen will let anyone park there.
Even on our overflow nights, I've never seen anybody foolish enough to, I don't think there's ever been a car parked there, they like using the gravel one, but not. To go back to the ordinance, you can serve at eleven on Sundays.
Oh.
The revised ordinance has it.
Oh, should we?
It says in the boards with, can you read it to us, please?
Um, except as permitted by section ten oh one two six of this chapter, no license holder, its agents or employees shall dispose or permit the consumption of alcoholic beverages on licenses, on license premiseses between the hours of two AM and eleven AM on Sunday. So that the probation time is between two and eleven, sun after eleven we can serve.
So then to take that, does his license need to reflect that, or is that on his license?
I can rework that, cuz currently it's not correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's a license change.
But then your, your off sale, that's when you can't do off sale.
Yeah, until.
Okay, so then we take the motion back. We rescind the motion.
Yep.
Save you guys some money.
Oops.
Thank you.
Perfect.
So the last thing with that, uh, car bike deal tomorrow night, um, we have some live music, and I have talked to Vance and Cory about this a couple times, is we are entertaining the thought of having some live music, um, in the future, uh, tomorrow's seven to nine, we just didn't wanna tread too late in the night, our first night, until we get this figured out with the city, um, and even as far as talking about Bean Days, I've been in talks with Cory and about doing maybe our own street dance, the fire hall, Ryan has, we've been in talks about maybe them running the gates and, uh, and they could take the profit from the gate and we sell liquor, even, uh, August, September, maybe we're talking about it, and hopefully getting that to maybe bring back Bean Days, but just start with a concert and, and, uh, do something like that, with my main question was what would the noise ordinance time be, whether if I had another band in July, you know, and it was midnight, or do I need a permit time?
Isn't the noise ordinance midnight, I wanna say it is, right?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I have no clue, I'm just asking, so we get lined up for the future, maybe.
Yeah, I think we should visit about Bean Days and kinda just talk to some of the ideas. You may be gone, but I'll bring this up later, we're looking to put together a committee. So it's not just, not just the city, but that we can get input from the community, things they want, have them help put it, put it together, um, and so incorporating a street dance on Saturday would be a nice closeout to that kind of event.
Well, everybody's asking about it, I mean, I hear probably Wednesday, on the average it gathers it up, you guys are bringing back Bean Days, there's a new bar, um, I, you know, I'd love to work with and get Bean Days back, um, like I say, I'm willing to do a concert this year, whether Bean Days isn't ready.
Are you thinking like concert or street dance?
Street dance.
Street dance, yeah.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, and I suppose we're thinking, I mean, that's a nice closeout to it, we tossed around, you know, the kitty parade in the morning on Saturday, which has always been super popular, some sort of activity in the afternoon, um, I talked to Cory about the Lions, maybe doing the typical pancake breakfast, you know, maybe we can get the seniors to host a bingo game, I've talked to the Boy Scouts about doing a Junior Olympics or whatever we call it in the afternoon, you know, basketball shooting, you know, just little basic kinda games for fun, things to do, um, we've talked about bringing in some animals from the zoo for, heading to, I mean, just a whole bunch of ideas, of things to do, so, and, you know.
That's great, I think it's.
Closing it out with a dance is fantastic.
Mm-hmm, I would just like to move forward with it, I mean, if nobody's gonna take the steps and get this going, it's been dead for a couple years, and maybe there's too much going on and it's, that's what killed it, nobody really knows, and, um, I'm willing to do the street dance, I know the fire halls, Ryan has said that they would do kinda the security, not the security, but the gate and the gate, you know, um, we've been told that they would donate the old fencing, the old Bean Days group would donate that fencing, I'm not sure, I haven't heard that from whoever has it, but Oscar Thomas told me he's pretty sure that they would be willing to give us the cattle gates to use for it.
I think the action though is that we probably need to firm up the date so that we can get the application, because there's an application that needs to be submitted, right, for a special event like this, I wanna say that the, cuz.
Cuz it requires off site.
The off site, off site, well, it's, well, liquor would be onsite, o- outside the building, right, that's what the special permit required, right?
Be more blocking the street than the.
Being off premise.
Right.
So I think we just need to.
Off premise, yeah, which, that's an easy deal, it's more of, you know.
But I think there is an application and a time period, again, like the fireworks, right, we, we had to get some lead time, get that submitted and so forth, and then that will come here for approval and then.
Yep.
You know, the date will be set, so I think that's really all we're, all we need to do is just say, get that application submitted so that we can review it, and then we can proceed to get that.
I mean, if, if Bean Days isn't ready.
Right.
For August, I'm ready for music and.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is if you just plan that as a.
Sure.
Street dance event, and if.
And if you guys wanna take a move, that's great, um, I just talked to Ryan before I got here, just to kinda read, he said, yeah, as long as, uh, they'll donate us the cattle gate, then the fire department probably would, I would let the fire department hire the band, they would take the profit off the gate, I want nothing, I just would sell the booze and that'd be enough, but I was thinking late August, up to maybe second week in September, I know Bean Days was always about the last weekend. Pretty much, I went to it a lot of years and it was a lot of fun, I mean, I'd, I'd like to bring it back, cuz it was a really fun time.
I think we talked about the, the third weekend in August, which typically was when it was.
Yeah, right around there.
Before school started, I think that was always the, sort of the.
That kinda goes hand in hand with that noise ordinance too, and if, I would like to find out is, if we had a parking lot ban in my parking lot around our patio now, how late can noise happen there, that's something, you guys wanna chat about it or see what the actual ordinance is, I just don't wanna make anybody mad and music going till midnight and we'll get a lot of phone calls.
Okay.
So we'll wait, so we appreciate you checking.
But I think that was, yeah, so Sunday I can start selling booze at one.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So Dino Zarese said his, so we'll move on to item nine, Greg Lance, that's you, come on up to the podium, sir.
Just wanna find out the city's interest in the property that's adjacent to the city hall, uh, complex here, I've been approached by other people to purchase parts of their, at the whole, now it's contacted several years ago by someone in the city to purchase it, and they gave you first notice, and that's, that's why I'm here, so, is it a meeting sometime, or I can stay late tonight?
Yep, absolutely, so, um, should we get that on the, do we need to schedule that as a separate event for us to?
Can, can we just use it in our portfolios, work it?
Just in your portfolio and then bring your.
Yeah.
Reports to the council.
I can certainly take this, we've talked about it in our operations, but it's more.
So you wanna take the lead on.
I'll take the lead.
On getting the paperwork together.
You're the public.
Doing the reviews, yep.
Yes, we are interested, so.
So do you wanna meet with him tonight or another day?
No, I would prefer another day because I have to go home tonight packed. Yeah, um, can you, um.
Give this just contact information.
Yeah, give me some contact information and I will contact you, even if the phone call or something starts, that would be great.
Okay, that'd be good.
I mean, obviously, I don't know if we wanna try, if you, you got a timeline, do you have a timeline for trying to get?
I do, uh, the next few months, I'll put it on.
Okay, but if we, if we try and get the leases first round of negotiation done in the next three to four weeks, that'd be best case scenario, right?
Give us contact information or no, so I just call back.
Okay, yeah, so if you could write down your contact information, then we can go ahead and start that process.
Thank you.
So, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a price yet?
I won't ask.
See what, see the negotiation.
Turn it through that way.
Oh, he's, he's played poker before.
Just a quick bit of information, we, I don't know, two or three years ago, we purchased the property just south of the Coles, what I now call the North Coles Storage Building, from a fellow I knew, Dave Kessler, and we paid fifty thousand for that person.
Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is Rachel.
Hi, so I'm an employee at Jubilee Equine down the road, um.
What's your last name, by the way?
I'm Rachel Colwell.
Okay.
Cool, how do you, what do you do?
Colwell, C O L W E L L.
And what is the official name of your center out there?
Jubilee Equine.
Jubilee?
It's not mine, I'm just working there, but, um, so anyways, I heard that Horace wanted to try and make a new compost site, develop a new yard waste site, and we have kind of a similar problem, we have a lot of stall waste, and it's good manure, it's good fertilizer that could really be well composted down, we had an organic farmer taking it from us, but it was about thirty minute drive for us, and we have to dump our trailer about weekly, and weather permitting, doesn't always permit that, so financially it would cost a lot for us to build our own bunker to put it on, so we're hoping maybe partnering with you guys in developing your composting site, in exchange that we can dump our manure into the composting site, it's a wide open proposal, I'm just seeing if there's any interest, what, what you guys are planning at all as far as composting?
Well, we're still, we're looking at costs and those types of things, and what the state's allowing us to do or not do, like the burning and those types of things, but, uh, we haven't looked at every single cost, but I think we'd be open to discussing with you.
Sure answer, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
I don't see any problem with working with you guys on it, so.
We have some numbers about, of how much potential fertilizer we'd be giving you guys.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna, we have about a trailer load, I calculated approximately a hundred and fifty cubic yards a week, and that's, I think we're still only at half capacity of the barn too, so I have to keep that in account, but if we can help financially partner and get a big enough facility to handle it.
Yep.
I don't have any exact numbers right now, it's just.
Well, if, if you, if you have some idea of your current costs that you're spending.
Yeah.
For disposal, right, because then, cuz we're building some cost numbers for.
Okay.
What we're doing with dealing with the comp, well, it's not even composting today, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, we're trying to figure out a strategy for, if these are our costs, and then potentially if we generated this much compost that we could potentially sell or, you know, make available to residents, um, you know, cannot offset some of that cost, and then the question remains, how much are we actually getting?
Yep.
Right, how much do we generate on an annual basis, and we gotta make sure we get rid of it, right?
Yeah.
Cuz you don't wanna build excess and then not get rid of it, cuz then you got a, a smelly problem.
Exactly.
More smelly problem than you had before, so, uh, but absolutely, absolutely, let's, let's have discussion about that, so.
Good.
Contact information, if you guys exchange.
I can stay.
Get it, for me, I will.
Yep, I can stay till the end of the meeting.
Yep, let's, let's start, start the discussion.
Write it down on, do you have a card or a piece of paper or anything, who we would need to contact?
I should've, I came straight from work, I don't have a wallet.
Here, here, I got, I got a piece of paper here, if you wanna just write down your contact information, you got a pen handy?
Thank you, appreciate it, I will call you to speak, okay? Thanks.
Well, this is great, well, now, I guess we can continue to have this discussion, but one of the options would be if you guys could use, uh, um, oh, perfect.
Oh, thank you, that was.
Ah, all right.
Thank you.
All right, perfect, perfect, thank you. Nope, all right.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Lucas, you're up.
Good evening, Councilwoman May, um, the first item that we have is a first reading of a rezone for SAR addition, it's lots two and three, and it will be changing it from SR to R one, and planning commission discussed this at their May twenty-third meeting, and they recommended approval of the rezone.
Is that one of these documents, Lucas?
Nope.
Oh, it isn't, okay.
Nope.
The purpose of the rezone, these lots predate the current zoning ordinance, so what happened when the new zoning, zoning ordinance in two thousand and seven came in, what, what was done was, the zoning map was changed throughout the city to match the new zoning ordinance, and lots were brought in at what was kind of the closest neighbor for the zoning, these lots are zoned suburban residential, uh, right now, they actually don't meet suburban residential requirements, suburban, suburban residential would have a, a minimum of two hundred foot frontage, these have a hundred and fifty foot frontage, the reason I'm going for R one has to do with side yard setbacks, under residential estate, under suburban residential it has fifty, fifty foot side yard setbacks, and on a hundred and fifty foot lot, if you have fifty foot side yard setbacks, you can build a fifty foot house. You know, it's gonna be long and narrow, okay, and that, the reason I'm going for, from suburban residential to R one, is one of the lots in particular, I have sixty feet on the side yard of trees, so I'd like, so I, I, I wanna go for the, the, the smaller side yard setbacks, so I don't have to remove trees to make full use of the yard.
What is R one setbacks then, like twenty, ten? And there are, these are, these, these are the two, right?
Yeah, it's, it's two and three.
Two and three, there's nothing there right now?
No.
Just a part, it's one of the plot of yours?
It's, yeah, it's, it, it, it looks like a, I refer to it as the pasture.
Okay.
Basically, I have two daughters, that's, that was, that's what the reason for the, that we split the lots up years ago, uh, I'm probably gonna end up with a couple neighbors that I'm related to.
Sure you wanna do that?
Actually, we gotta one for, for, they'll take care of me in my old age, any other questions, by the way, this is a public hearing also for that.
Right. People wanna speak in opposition, but.
So do we have any, any members of the public that would like to speak on the rezoning? So do we have any, any members of the public that would like to speak on the rezoning of lots two and three? No. Okay, no comments, comments from the council?
No, I don't, I don't really have any, I mean, it's still an acre and it's three point six one, I mean, there's still large lots.
They're still large.
And he's still got a four point six that he's on, so.
So.
I don't have any.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have motion to, is this just a one time, Lucas, then, we just?
So this is first reading.
Do we need a motion on a first reading?
Yep.
Okay, a motion, we accept the preliminary rezone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries. Lucas, you're still up.
Sounds good, um, the next item that we have is a preliminary plat for Lost River third addition. This, so it's a public hearing first and then, um, this is approved, a recommended approval at the planning's May twenty-third meeting.
Is this one of the?
And this one, yep, this one, there's documents on it.
Which one? So twenty seventeen?
No, it's on, those are all the streets.
Oh.
I did just have paper copies as well.
Yeah.
Lost, it's Lost River flat, or Lost River third pack of it.
This one, I think, is just the, the public notice, it was published in the paper, I don't have the, the, the map.
You do.
Okay, well, keep going, I'll, I'll look for it.
Should we deal with the rezoning first prior to the?
Yeah, we can.
Wouldn't that correct order, right?
Okay. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, let's do rezoning first before we get into the details.
Correct, that makes sense.
Doesn't that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so on Lost River third addition, uh, same deal, we have a public hearing for the rezone and, um, the rezoning some lots to R6. Then we have Lynn, my step here from Jack O'Air's office and.
Yeah, Jack is out of the, out of the country currently, so I got a call this morning asking to be here to try to answer any questions, if there's anything I can't answer, I can bring it back to him. I've provided paper copies of a lot of these diagrams and Andrew with Laurie Engineering is here as well, that he can help answer any questions that the council has. As far as the, the rezoning, we'd be looking to, um, cut back the front yard setback to a twenty foot setback, uncertain of the lot. And there is an exhibit that depicts, depicts that, um, something like this of the cul-de-sac.
This, not this one, right?
Uh, no, that is not. There we go.
So where, um, this, where this map, where is that located?
We're looking at.
I don't know, I'm looking everywhere.
Back in the corner.
It's this area right here. And one thing we want to bring to our attention too is all the existing trees in this area, you know, that's the big thing Jack's looking at doing is, um, giving a little more room for the homes upfront by reducing that setback so that we don't have to cut down any of these paper trees. These trees help stabilize this riverbed, it's a lot of benefit. Not, not only that, but it's, it's the same, I'm asking for design, so.
So Russ, he's just changing, he's zoning up a lot, but not the sizes of the lots, just so he can get closer to the frontage, right?
Is that, is that correct?
Is that a correct statement? This R6 is gonna allow him to reduce.
So it's cutting, it's cutting this setback right here?
Right, you can see I.
So the, so the house can actually pull closer to the street?
Right, he's not looking to do it on, on bigger, we're just looking at box elder circle.
Oh, just these homes right here?
But the two lots on your drive are not impacted by this.
Okay.
So, so is this, am I correct? That went on here, there was no cul-de-sac, is that?
Right, that was just established as one big parcel to be subdivided.
Yes.
Which is, which is now.
It was, it was part of the first plat, but this is a larger part of the parcel, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why we're, we're looking at it, it is, it is actually planning that big parcel. We have to replant it, big parcel.
Thirty there, she has a whole subdivision that are parcel, makes some minor additions to some of the existing lots to that.
But in relation to the rezoning, you're just looking at these, these lots.
And so what do these, what do these lots, what size do they end up being, which is difficult for me to tell.
I, I think that the, the.
Five seven, fifty one thousand, thirty seven thousand, twenty four thousand.
Yeah, here it is right here.
So.
That means, that's like Chinese.
Well, an acre is fifty, what, fifty two, right?
Forty three, forty six.
There you go, so.
Right, so.
Most of these, ones over acre and two.
These two lots right here, right?
Yep.
Or these, these three lots?
Correct, those three.
I believe he's looking at all five around.
All five that are around that, yeah, box elder?
Yeah, because if you look at the exhibit he had with the building control on the comment, um, he clearly has, the, the ones facing did are, are going to maintain the, the setback, the ones within the cul-de-sac are going to be.
Twenty, okay. So all four of those lots are at least over a half acre.
And they are, they are big lots, it's just if you look at that building control, I mean, you see how much of those, those lots that.
So th- these are the trees that were trying to preserve along this bank?
And even some of the others.
So then, interestingly, where R6 typically is used for smaller lots, in this case, the only thing that's small about these lots is really the frontage, because they're still large.
So that the R6 is a minimum, the, the R6 states it's a minimum, but it doesn't say anything about the maximum what an R6 lot can be.
It's the frontage is what you're talking about.
Correct.
Jack, Jack has used, Jack has used R6, for instance, in Lost River second addition, um, not for small lots, but having to do with setbacks.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense.
And, and basically, it's, it's what he's doing, it's what he's doing here, in fact, when he first came and started talking to me about this about five or six months ago, he wanted to start with variance and I said, we do not create plats with variance. You can't do it that way. So he came up with a unique way of actually developing these lots.
And to maintain the, I'll call it maintaining the integrity of the city, larger sized lots, and yet utilizing R6 to the best possible way by creating smaller frontage, so, sounds. Good compromise.
Good compromise, yeah.
So since this is a public hearing, do we have any members of the public that wish to comment on the rezoning?
Seeing.
Is that gonna model in the future with, if the boards have to widen?
This is a cul-de-sac though, so there'd only be those five, to my knowledge, just as deep in the development.
I think she's typing one along, that's a long, so.
No, and if, you know, there's, you can, you guys can see that, right, like that's available there, it's mostly gonna affect the cul-de-sac, which is maximized for a fire truck that would never ditch, you can get maximized for.
I mean, that's a wide, seventy foot road is wide, yeah.
With the turnaround for plows and all of that, fire trucks and all that. The seventy foot road is very wide. Members of the council, any questions, comments, no? Okay, so.
Make a motion to approve the rezoning to R6.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need to do the plat.
Preliminary plat, yep, uh, same deal, public hearing, and then for the preliminary plat in that box elder circle, Jack is requesting that the sidewalk requirement be waived, because it's, again, that's for, um.
Right, we want to maintain fire truck turnaround.
Yeah.
For fire coverage, but at the same time, it's a, it's a genuine, we don't need five lots, and that cul-de-sac is very difficult traffic, generally it's tree standard estate, important sidewalks, those kinds of things.
And the planning commission was okay with that.
Okay, we'll entertain any comments from anyone in the room on the public hearing for the replat?
Preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat. Seeing none, the council?
No.
Uh, so we're.
Do we need to approve these individually?
Uh, we'll just, if you want to do it with, but you already approved the rezone.
Yeah, we'll do it, go ahead.
So I'll make a motion, do we need to make?
You already did the rezone, now you're doing the preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat, right.
With the, with allowing them to waive the sidewalk requirement.
Okay, what he said. Make a motion to approve the preliminary plat to waive the sidewalk.
With a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lucas, you're still up. Big list here, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's a busy day, let me tell you. Um, the next item that we have is discussion on Olivia's Acres. And the first item will be a resolution rescinding the, um, approval of Olivia's Acres addition, that was done July fifth. So this, I drafted a resolution so you guys can do it, um, it's pretty short, but it basically just says that the developers are questioning that you rescind your approval of Olivia's Acres, um, final plat that was done last summer. And that way we, they can turn Olivia's Acres second into the new Olivia's Acres, because there was problems with the first one that was approved last year, where a lot got tied on to it that shouldn't have been and it's not even in the subdivision. So we couldn't record it without a lot being attached on there.
So, but by default, we have to remove this because it's wrong.
True, yep, and that way we can allow the new, um, Olivia's Acres second, which has gone in front of the planning commission, to become Olivia's Acres addition.
So.
Okay, so discussion, no? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is the motion to rescind the original addition based on everything Lucas said. So Lucas, that takes us to the discussion on the current rezone.
Yep, and we'll, now, from now on, we'll just call this Olivia's Acres addition, not Olivia's Acres second, it'll just be Olivia's Acres addition. And so the first thing that we have for that, um, will be a rezone.
Do you have a document?
Um, it should be. Brian, you should have an email, um, with it.
Uh, do we?
If you don't have, on the internet.
Is it Olivia's? Yeah, I do, so. This one right here? No, sorry, this one right, no, that's rescinding.
It, it should be relatively new.
Yeah, it should be today, right?
Yeah.
I spelled it right, didn't I?
How are you spelling it? I can't see that, sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The only thing I saw today was the rescind. I saw there's nothing else.
So that sends around, Scotty won one of your newest emails. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I can't see what you're searching, it should be from.
I just sent it to you, um, right, right?
Try Scott.
Scott.
Scott?
Yeah, Paul, he had all.
No, not someone else. You just sent it?
Yeah, I was ready to start the meeting.
Does anybody have copies of it?
Perry, do you have a copy?
Perry, I just sent Perry's email too, we just sent it, that way you can make copies if, if we're gonna get the pop up, we send it to your email too, so if we're gonna make copies, yeah.
Okay, how about if, how about if he goes and gets in and we'll circle back?
Yep.
So let's move to what would be next.
Two months ago.
South Acres? Let's move down to South Acres.
Okay, so it's, um, South Acres, we have to do our second reading still for the rezone, and it was, that's the one that Jerry Boyer did, and we had to do the, the subdivision because that, South Acres had been done so many times. So we just have our, um, second reading of that rezone, so it's a rezone from suburban residential to residential estate, and that was done. Yeah. Yep.
Then we do a lot split, simple lot split, we have.
But we, we couldn't do that.
Couldn't do that, we had to do it, because it had already been split once.
Yeah, it's, we had to do a subdivision. Yeah.
Do you remember that?
So that was at your May first, that was at your May first meeting.
Is it that one?
Okay, is it this one?
It's a three acre, I never got a map for it, but it's three acres and it's.
No?
I remember the discussion, though. And he provided something.
And then he still has to do his final plat, but I figured we'd get done with the rezone. Yeah, like I said, you guys approved it at your, uh, yeah.
Can you give us a little background since?
Let's put all the.
We're all, we're all a little.
So he had, uh, he had a specific sized lot, he wanted to split it into two lots, but because that lot had been split off of other lots previously, we couldn't just do a simple lot split, so we had to go through the process of a subdivision. And the lots were still sizable, right, weren't they still multi acre lots, even when they split, they were still a couple of acres each, it was just the process we had to go through. And that's how I.
South, South Acres split by country acres and that, yeah.
Kind of the south end of country acres.
Okay.
I don't have it.
Uh, I don't either, for South Acres, or for?
Oh, sorry, no, nevermind. I'm looking for the Olivia's rezones.
Well, I had him send it to you before, because I thought his engineer had sent it to Perry, but I didn't.
Okay, so, um, any further discussion on the second meeting on South Acres fifth edition rezone?
I make motion to accept the second reading.
Second, second.
Motion by Jay, second by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, I'm gonna move on to.
Residential to residential estate.
Yes, sir. Okay, um, Greenwich landscaping is the next thing I have, is that what you guys have?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, at the request of the mayor, I sent a letter, that was that landscaping business that was being conducted out of his home. And residents were calling saying that they had issues with that business being ran out there, so I sent a letter to him saying you have to cease operation out of this home, it's not his home for that. He has since called and emailed me saying that he has moved his business to Kindred and he's still gonna live in Horace, but he's just gonna move the business to Kindred and he will no longer operate from his home. So the mayor wanted me to give you an update saying that that was being carried.
Okay.
I'm all good to go there.
So Kindred's gonna let him do it?
Well, I think he actually went to the shop. So it's more of a business.
So then, Lucas, you had, uh, the next item on the agenda shows a resolution authorizing issuance of revolving loan front bonds.
Yeah, so that's this big pack of finances authorizing funds go forward improvement district two thousand and sixteen one, which is a water project. So this resolution just states that, to start getting money for it.
What project is that?
Sixty one sewer.
Sliding project.
Relaying?
So the line sixty one.
The sewer job?
It's a looping, right?
So it's two thousand and sixty three?
Three is the looping, three is the looping. One is the line.
It's sixteen, this one's sixteen, it's like.
So this is twenty sixteen dash one, that's what you had before.
So is it twenty sixteen dash three?
Yes.
Oh, so it's.
Twenty sixteen dash three.
Okay, so it's named wrong.
The only thing I'll change is the three, it's the one.
So I think you had it listed in.
It's listed, right, because it's still a water.
It's, it's looping though?
It's looping up seventeen and down wall.
Okay, what is it, Lucas, or Jim?
Twenty sixteen dash three. Twenty sixteen dash three.
It's a resolution.
That is what I have, that's my bad. It was, I had to switch it earlier today from one to three. Okay.
Issuing a sale of the bond for water treatment.
Two thousand sixteen dash three. And that, it was the project cost of the bond is going to be, uh, five hundred eighty thousand.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So.
Motion by Dave?
Second.
Second by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
This means that the Public Finance Authority approve our SRF so we can, they can actually issue bonds against it.
This is the backing, the backing of it, yep.
So.
Happy day, happy day.
Lucas, are you the person we talked to about setting a preliminary, a minimum monetary penalty for the fireworks ordinance? Which, is that, does that go through you?
Yeah, it was Scott, I think I already started on that.
Because I know we had that discussion last month, but we did not create and put a number in place, and we tabled that discussion to this meeting.
Okay.
What was the number?
Uh, fireworks.
Setting a minute, minimum monetary penalty for the fireworks. All we said was up to a thousand dollars. And we had been requested by the sheriffs to have a minimum so that if they're going to give a ticket, they don't know how much to write if someone had taken it for. And so they asked us to come up with a number so that they could do their job. Because otherwise they're not going to do anything.
Is there anything that the state dictates?
I don't think they have any minimums.
Section of their fireworks.
So this is if somebody is off, shoot them off outside of our.
Yeah, because the.
Yeah, and the sheriff asks them to stop and they don't, and, you know, maybe it's a repeat offender that. I mean, there, I guess there are certain circumstances, they will decide if it warrants a ticket versus a warning versus just taking the fireworks versus, you know.
Well, you don't want to make it simple, right, you don't want it to be like twenty-five bucks.
I mean, it could be anything.
Like, it's a hundred dollar line? Just throw a number.
There's really no precedent for other cities like this, right?
To anyone's knowledge?
The ones that I saw were up to a hundred, was kind of the average. Some were fifty, some were a hundred, but a hundred was the average.
It's up to you guys as city council.
Yeah, it would seem somewhere between fifty and a hundred be probably a basic number for a minimum.
Make it fifty dollars. Kind of as a first, first step and see how often it happens.
Sure.
And if it becomes an issue and it's, people are still willing to pay it, then too much, then we increase it.
Okay.
And so is that, would that be something then that we have a fee schedule? So we have a fee schedule that attaches to the fireworks ordinance?
My concern with that is, would the police officers have that fee schedule? Would you provide that to them?
Well, if we just told them the minimum was fifty and they know the maximum, it says up to a thousand.
Because it would be easier for you to change it in the future if you're not happy with the amount.
Prefer a fee schedule as well.
Well, I guess if the minimum would be.
Well, if we can do fifty in it and then just say it can be changed by resolution.
Well, because, I mean, what would define whether a deputy would issue them a hundred or a two hundred dollar fine? You know, if it's up to a thousand, it, it, we're leading up to their discretion to decide the amount. So, but I don't think you want the deputy to make that decision, really, that should be a court or a judge that would assess the fine.
Yeah, it's, it would just went, it reverted to your standard, um, violation of ordinance is penalty, that says infraction is up to a thousand dollars.
And then the judge will then at that point?
Yeah, so I mean, the fireworks, the fireworks.
Yeah, I mean.
One.
Or a percent of lot or.
If they become blatant, then they can increase the fees, you know, then it goes for the judge and so forth to assess additional fines.
We can put that in the ordinance too. Upon multiple violations.
So obviously that's not going to be in place for this year, but it would be more.
Well, the minimum could be for this, this year?
Yeah, change the resolution where we want. Or change the ordinance where we want, it just takes first reading and second reading to do it. And then it's if there's a penalty that's done, it has to be published in the newspaper.
That's what I mean, it wouldn't be in place for July fourth.
Oh, no, I thought.
It would be in place for the months after.
Right.
Yeah.
For the months after, for December.
Okay.
Well, more for, you know, the middle of June, or the middle of July.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Okay, so, let's go, so make a motion, make a motion to set the minimum fee at fifty dollars for, or violation of the fireworks ordinance.
Via.
Fee schedule.
Not make a change in the ordinance, but a resolution for a fee schedule.
Oh, sure.
Fee schedule being fifty dollars.
Right.
And, yeah.
Okay.
So that's our motion, second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so now we're back to you guys, so hopefully you have copies now. Yeah, take the podium.
So, so next, so next time this, so next time this will be changed, it'll just be Olivia's Acres, it won't be second edition now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
For the final thought.
Right, right.
So the goal is to slap the whole thing.
Right now, right?
Yeah.
So we are now having a public hearing?
Yep, for the rezon, so start with the rezon. So what's going on with, um, the rezon is they would like to turn residential estate to R2. Um, and that's because the sewer line, the sewer project is going to go through, so they don't need their lot size to be as big as they were. Because before they needed to have individual tanks, now they can connect to, um, the SSL project, remember that ends up going down to Olivia's Acres. And then they also want to do, um, residential estate to R6 on the south end of the development.
The, these, uh, we don't have it up there, so all these over here, right?
Yep, those are, those are your R6, the other ones are R2.
Okay.
And then they had to change in the south-east corner, they merged two lots, so that is actually, you remember what that one is, gets owned for?
R6.
R6.
No, I got it.
Or sorry, R2?
R2.
R2.
Yeah, that's right.
It's a water retention or something?
That's in different.
Lot forty-three.
And that way, the intent of the planning commission on that was so there's not small lots right next to country acres. And so there's a bigger lot, um, all the way on that, that east end, that's going to connect to country acres, will be adjacent to country acres. And then, um, for the time being, for temporary purposes, there's going to be a cul-de-sac in the southwest corner, not allow for emergency personnel to be able to turn around in that corner.
This cul-de-sac, or are you saying?
Yep, it'll be in that, where your pen is.
Lot seven and eight in the south, southwest corner.
Oh, here.
And it'll be temporary until the roads are actually built.
Oh, because there's no through road here.
Yep, so there's no turnaround.
This would be a temporary cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Okay.
And then each one of the houses will be built up on all those lots. We can discuss that in our preliminary plat.
So the seventy-third street south is intended to be a through road?
No.
Because this, this, this would only be paved up through here?
They would only be made up through there.
And then this would be the other exit?
Yes.
In the future, the idea would be seventy-third would continue down, correct?
It doesn't have, it doesn't have to follow that land. It can veer off to the west and go down, uh, depending on, on how it's developed.
So this is the challenge, is we are, as you know, Russ, we are currently in the process of trying to update our land use plan. And right now, the land use plan that the city is currently has shows that area as residential states, if I remember correctly. Meaning there, they were based on it being the larger lots that are typically down in that area. And that's kind of where we are at this point in time. We are looking at making modifications. But I can't, I can't tell you what that's going to change to, because right now we're updating it to where we are currently, and then we'll be working with our planner, Brent. You've probably met him, or maybe haven't, he's only been here just, just a very short time period. And he's going to help us to put together what the plan is going forward. Because we've talked for a long time about coming out of these envision meetings with what people want, why people come here, and all of these things, and why do people want to live in Horus? And it always came back to, they like the small neighborhood feel, they like the larger sized lots, they don't want small lots like you have in Fargo, West Fargo, and that's why people come here. And so, taking all of that into consideration and figuring out, okay, what is it we want? And where do we want things to be? And this is the, the process of now taking what we've learned from the envision meetings, from the members of the community, and then taking that and trying to relook at that land use plan that we approved and say, okay, in, in the sense of continuity, what do we want? We know that, that this council has agreed that we should have a plan going forward of, you know, what percentage of lots do we want in our town that are small? What percentage do we want that are medium? What percentage do we want that are large? So that our definition has historically been totally different than the definition in any other city, Fargo or West Fargo, or really who I'm talking about. And so, when we talk about a large lot, or I'll call it low density, I'm getting this right, we, we typically need things that are larger than an acre. And that tends to be a majority of the property in town. Then we have what we'll call medium density, so things that run between, and this is pretty loose, because we haven't defined it a hundred percent, but thinking about a quarter up to an acre. So again, that's a really broad range, but from a land use standpoint, it's helpful to be able to kind of pick where that's going to be. And then we have small or high density, which typically in Horus means like quarter acre lots or smaller. And we don't have a ton of those, but what percentage of those do we want? And, and we don't know, I'll be very honest with you. We, we don't know, we're not even sure where we want them to be exactly. Because this is a learning process for everybody. And so when we look at this, it, it, it's really totally different from what the typical, the land use is in that entire area. And so, I don't know if we sit down with the planner, if he would say, oh yeah, that's a great use of that space, or if he's going to say, well, you know, if you're going to put these smaller lots, and these are things I've heard from other planners, is typically they're closer to the city center, and then as you move out, you have a little bit larger sized lots. And again, I don't know. But I know that since we have a little bit of time, because we're not going to have sewer down there right away, I, I think it would be a great idea for you to sit down with him and kind of talk about a vision for some happy medium to what you're trying to accomplish and what the feedback that we're getting from the citizens and and I don't know what it's going to look like. But I know that we've had all kinds of ideas. I, I, I've, I've heard a lot of different theories on things we could and should do. And so I, I'd really like to make that recommendation too, because as, you know, just listening to Russ, we don't know if this road's going to go anywhere in the future, but that's possible. And just trying to make sense, you know, does the road go through? I don't know, because I don't know what, we don't have anything planned yet. So we kind of have a whole blind slate that we can work with. And I think that's to all of our advantage. You know, and that, when we approved the last one, it fit because it was these larger lots that fit perfectly within the context of where it was going. And I completely understand now that you want, now that we have sewer available or will in the future, that smaller sized lots make a little bit more sense. And, and trying to make things make sense financially for the people that are going to buy the lots. But.
So I think the action item is for us to review the, the zoning map for that area and look at if there are changes that need to be made to the zoning map, well, the land use. Right, there's only a land use map.
We have to, we have to make that change, but I really, you know, Scott, are you open to visiting with Brent and?
Well, it's not just me involved in it, I mean, there's obviously a couple, the two guys behind the project. I'm more here for Fred, I think I told you that at the, well, it's been two, three months going on since we started this process, but. So those guys would have to be on board with it. Um, at this point, you know, with kind of Alex Brent, I, I can't, I don't want to speak for them, but I don't know that I'll up with that there. Uh, this Brent, I mean, he came on two weeks ago with you guys, I remember, I think, I was at one of the meetings.
Well, yeah, we've been talking about this now for a few months, so he's new, yep.
But recently was approved to, to move forward with that.
Yep, within a couple of weeks, for sure.
Could I make a comment about that? I've been asking for a city planner for a long time. But that does not mean that I expected that if, if what you, if what the city planner is going to do is replace planning and zoning, then fine, uh, then you don't need us. In other words, we have been, we have been making decisions, uh, based on yeah, you said the original Olivia's was, was one acre plus lots. That was because it had me, because we haven't had sewer available. This city cannot afford one acre plus lots.
Oh, we understand that.
Okay.
There's not a question there.
Uh, and the discussion about lot sizes in particular in the city is not going to be decided by your planner. If it is, then again, you don't need planning and zoning. And most of us have other things to do anyway.
We're, we're not here to try and decide the scope of what is planning and zoning and what is the planner. So I, the, again, we're, we're still trying to work through the scope of the responsibility for the planner, right?
Yes.
I, I don't think we've got that really nailed down yet, so I, 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 I don't want to derail the whole conversation by, you know, trying to figure that out at this point. So, I hear what you're saying.
What I'm getting at is, is what you're saying right now is you want to shut down development until you decide.
Well, I think what we're saying now is we'd like to have an idea of what percentage of smaller lots and what percentage of, um, I'll call them medium sized lots, we really want to have and not have. Because in the, because if we look historically at how things have been, we don't have a plan. Developers come in and they give us a plan and we approve it. Which means we're, and don't take this one away, but we're kind of stuck with whatever they plan. We're not part of the planning process, here's how we'd like our city to look. And we're kind of now trying to get on the front end side of that and say, well, let's look at it and think about what, how do we want our city to look? So that we can work with the developer and come up with something that everybody's going to be happy with. And I think that's really where, what the question is, is how many R6 lots do we want? I don't know the answer, what percentage do we need? I don't know the answer either. And R6 is such a, as we just saw on Jack's development, that's, I mean, that's everything from small to big based on the size of the, of the whole lot, because that's really all the advantage.
I know, but I think if we ask the question of our citizens, which we have, of what they'd like, they're all going to say huge lots, we all love huge lots, we all do.
Well, no, I don't think everybody, but a majority, for sure, for sure.
A majority?
For sure.
But as we state, what kind of economic, social status are we looking at, that's the wrong term, whatever, for our city? You know, that creates a certain level by having the larger.
That's the wrong term, whatever, for our city, you know, that creates a certain level by having the larger lots. So then either we're stopping others from coming in or we're not. And I, you know, I understand what you're saying. I just think stating that a half acre lot is a, or a one acre larger is a huge lot. Yeah, it's a huge lot, but stating that a smaller one, even though we do have a number of them in our city, I think we need a good mixture. And to just make a statement that we all want bigger lots is a, is a bad decision to make. But Russ, you guys had a decision or a criteria of why you said this was going to be okay and some future direction of what could be done around here.
Look, look where this is. The land going south of there, there's very little, there's very little land left going south.
Because of the
Because of the
The version, right.
Okay, we're not going to, uh, my, my guess is this would also be a good place going across the road, developing south of there where we probably look at townhouses.
Sure.
You know, larger townhouses.
But it'd still be a higher density like that and almost matching what you have.
Higher density is, is when you start looking at R five, R four, R five.
Sure.
Uh, in general, look at the size of these R two lots here.
They're still big lots.
They're still, they're still large.
Yeah, most of those are bigger, those are all bigger than R one lots. And if you want to say, okay, drive over here to Mickey Mouse, drive through old Horace and tell me about the size of all these large lots we have in town.
They're not.
Okay, that's not how Horace started. That's how us new people paint town. But you go a couple of blocks east of here, apparently those houses must be selling on those R six lots. Because the next thing we're going to be bringing to us some point is we're going to be bringing apartments in.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Horace is going to have apartments, unless you decide that Horace is not going to have apartments.
How about, I, I don't know if we want to get into a debate on, on what, what direction we need to go here. I think what we should do is say, if, if we want to send this back to, because you, to your point, if, if we want to send this back to planning and zoning to reassess this against the land, you guys have already done that, I'm assuming, against the land's use and what you, what you guys approved from this plat, correct?
Yes.
So that would be, that would be the only action is to say, either the council disagrees with that assessment from planning and zoning, and we're asking them to, to bring that plat back to planning and zoning to, through other criteria. Or or we approve this plat. I think that's what you're, what you're looking for is for us to approve, because you guys have already approved the plat as it is. Is looking for us to approve, correct?
The city council can make recommendations on the plat. And then that will be, that will then go to the planning for their final approval. And then they have to go back to you guys for your
Okay, so it's iterating through
So you guys can now say, if you're not happy with the R six, well, what do you want changed on there? What should it be? And this has already been tabled twice.
Yeah, but even, even if we say we're, what the statement is, is the ones in the end. So even if you say you want to make them all fifty foot lots or fifty five, that's still R six though, right? And is there any change in the zoning?
If, what we're working on with the zoning right now is, is changing to R two and R six.
So R two, can you, can you tell us what R two and R six are? Can you give us that definition? That will probably be helpful.
Yes.
Because it, like in R two, for example, is like twenty-three thousand square foot, which is about two, three quarters an acre, right?
R two is eleven thousand five hundred square feet.
Or larger.
Or larger.
Right.
Yeah, R two minimum is a four acre. The minimum lot width for R two is seventy feet. R six
So that's why those are R two, because it's an eighty foot front. But they're narrow and deep, essentially how they're set up.
So you said fifty thousand square foot was an acre?
Forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand is an acre.
Oh, forty-four.
Yeah.
Just to make your
The, the minimum lot, the minimum area for, uh, R six is four thousand square feet.
And it's probably the width is what's affecting these, because these are forty foot front.
Yeah, what was the frontage for?
Frontage is forty feet unless it's two boxes of minimums, then it's thirty feet.
Okay.
And those R six on this are eighty-seven hundred square feet.
Right.
And you're, but also the R six is giving you the setback, right? In terms of, assuming you want to put the house towards the front of the lots, you have more backyard type thing, right? That's kind of a logic.
Well, on these, they may or may not want to do that because these are deep, these are deep R six lots.
And, and the row of the entrances on the other side.
Yeah, two hundred, two hundred, these foot deep, two hundred foot deep, forty foot across the front, two hundred feet deep. So they're quite deep.
How, how deep are the ones over here?
Not even fifty, forty by one fifty.
Thank you.
So a bit larger than those.
So a bit larger.
My issue is, if we send them back, I mean, I don't think the, you know, your only thing is if we state we want them all fifty foot or fifty five foot, you're going to reduce them by a few. But I don't think the planning zoning is going to come back with a different, really a different, because he brings up a very valid point, is that other side.
We are not going to, we are not going to redesign this for him.
Right.
So if you turn down the zoning, then I believe it's incumbent upon you to say why and what it is you want.
Yep.
Because they have to know what, what
Right, what's wrong with it.
They have to know.
Yep, why it's not being approved.
Yeah.
Yep, makes sense.
You don't have to, but, but again, planning and zoning is not going to redesign
But the, the R six and R two were selected because of the frontage. The, the depth is, exceeds the minimum, so it's, it's really the frontage is what the, the limiting factor is in terms of the
Yeah.
The R.
I think we need to move forward.
I think we need to move forward. I think we're too far along to, to kind of bring this back and send it back. I don't know that we have any reason why we would, I, 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 I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying.
Well, I think if the only thing that we were going to ask them to do anything different, it would be to maybe make some of these R sixes a little bit larger, but not hugely larger. And I don't know if that's theoretically possible, but
I mean, you reduce, you lose, let's say you lose two or three lots, that's what you're going to reduce it down, even go to fifty.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, it doesn't change the overall context of how they fit in the picture that way, and it's only a preliminary.
I know, but I don't, if we approve this, it's not changing lot, it's not really changing by the time it comes to the final.
What you're, what you're working on now is zoning.
Right, right, that's, that's, so I, I mean, I agree with that.
And the only, and the only way it would change is if we said, what, what's R five or wanted these to change to R four, for some reason, right? To make them a little larger.
Yeah, because unfortunately, that's the part that we don't know, is does that change anything at all?
Right.
And, and only Russ would be the best one to answer that question. We don't know.
I'm just gonna, I make a motion to accept the zoning as communicated with the city.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, so do you have that, Vance? There was a lot of discussion.
Changes to what, R two and R six?
Well, we were, change to the zoning as plotted, or cha-change to the zoning of R two and R six as plotted.
As recommended.
Or as recommended, right.
As recommended by planning and zoning.
Right.
So we have a first from Dave, a second from Brian.
So to recap, that'll be a rezone from residential estate to R two in a majority in that southeast corner. And then from residential estate to R six on that south cap.
Correct.
Correct.
So we have first and a second. Do you have that, Vance?
Yep.
Okay, roll in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So our motion passes. So we've approved it, and so we still ask you to visit with them though. I think it'd just be helpful anyway.
And can we do that? Could we make changes? It wouldn't affect the preliminary, it could just be made before the final plat if we did.
What changes are you talking about?
You have to decide.
We sort of decided
If, for example, you change it to fifty foot lots, it would still, they, they, you could change it to fifty front, fifty foot front, frontage lots. It's still R six, so it exceeds R six. It meets the R six requirement, so you could make them larger if you wanted to, but you wouldn't have to.
What you have right now is, is the first, the first reading of the zone change that you requested.
But I want to kick back, is my question. I mean, we'd certainly visit with them.
Yeah, unless you, I think unless you change it to with R two or something, that would probably bring it back to change the zoning.
So we'll still through a second reading on this rezon at the next city council meeting.
Okay.
For the rezon. Now we're still through the preliminary plat.
Still through the preliminary plat, which is the next document.
Yes.
That's this one.
Okay.
So now we also have a public hearing for this, which is the preliminary plat of Olivia's acres.
So do we have any, anyone here to speak on the preliminary plat? Members of the council?
Well, in general, I'm, I mean, based on the information the planning and zoning has provided about what is happening south of that area, I'm okay with the current plat as it looks, um, because you're trying to create some type of buffer there, are deep. But as Sharon has stated, I think to get a general agreement, is there flexibility with the developers to maybe take these lots and make them a little bit wider? That would be my only suggestion.
And it's probably for the similar reason as the reason why that larger lots in the corner.
That's all, but I don't see, I don't see them going to that size lots. I would
No, I don't think so.
Seven, fifty foot, maybe your max fifty-five where you maybe lose a couple, but I mean, based on the, based on the termination of planning and zoning, it's well thought out.
Scott, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a question. If we do meet with Brett, um, can he, I, I just don't want to, obviously at a final plat, not coming with how this has progressed.
Yep.
Um, if Brett says, after a discussion with him, I mean, I certainly don't know if he said no with him, says that this is a good vision for Horace, thinks that this whole food is fine, then would, would there be a need to change the width? I mean, he looks at this and thinks this would be acceptable.
Well, I think that, I think at that point, it's up to you when the final plat comes for us. And as you've seen, the can, final plats can always be modified as things change.
Does this say that I'm in?
Because once a plat gets recorded, then that's, that would be the part where it'd have to change. If, if they would have to be recorded again, right? Because what would be the process?
Once it's recorded, that's
You're doing the preliminary plat now.
Yeah.
And if, if there's no changes along the route and they come back with the final plat.
Could be a year from now, right?
No, it could, it could be, it could be
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
It could be in a month from now.
Or it could be
See, one of the things they're looking at here to give you some information is, they have huge areas in there of water retention. Uh, because they need them, because they need the dirt, because they have to, uh,
Build it up.
Build up.
Because it is a flood plain area.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen people windsurfing over there in the spring.
So is the retention, like it's going to be like a pond or?
There'll be two, two ponds in the, yep.
Two big ones.
Yep. There's some dashed areas, huge blocks one and two in the, CB, the northeast corner is a pond.
This hole, right?
This hole big. Yep.
The square is will be sloped into a potential bigger retention.
Probably have water feature, water quality in the northeast.
And both have a pumping capability.
Yep.
Yeah, so they would have a lift station to get them into the ditch, which is the natural drain to the river, right?
In the northeast corner, is where it's going?
Yeah.
No, there, doesn't it drain to the river?
That'll drain to the river. Close the drain twenty seven.
Drain twenty seven?
Goes east.
Okay.
Even though the river's right there. River's down where the bike was.
The Cheyenne's up.
That's just bizarre, okay?
That would make sense.
So we need to, either we need approval of the plat as it is, or we need a recommendation of what we want changed. Is that a state, is that a correct statement?
Or you can deny it.
The lower
This was a preliminary.
You can, you can deny it.
Your three options are approve, approve with recommendations to change and then deny.
Okay. I just want to get to the detail.
And like I said, the planning commission, their recommendations to change were merging those two lots in the southeast corner and doing a temporary turnaround in the southwest corner.
So forty, forty-four as plotted is the larger, or, or no, that, on this one, it, it is still separate?
Nope, on this one it has changed. Forty-three was, there was another lot there in the southeast corner. It was block forty-three.
Oh, so right, but right now forty-three and forty-four, forty-three and forty-four are not changed on this one.
Okay, wasn't on that one.
Right, so, yeah, so those two, that would be a change is to combine those forty-three and forty-four.
Well, on the other plat, which you have in front of you, it hasn't that way.
Correct, correct, but I'm saying, we've already essentially approved this, right? Now we're approving this.
He has, he has a current plat with those two blocks in the southeast.
Right, that's this one.
Yes.
Yes.
This is just a, what is this? This is just an infrastructure layout.
Yeah.
This is more
Okay.
And so you've talked, you've, you've had the discussion with, with park board, I believe that's all been taken care of.
We've already paid the park board months ago, so.
Check one thing off the list.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Yep.
I guess it, looks like everything is there, so I don't have a reason why I would recommend any changes, so I guess I would vote to approve.
But just for your information, before it comes to the final, they have, you have to have the developers' agreement done with that before you do, before you do the final plat.
That can be done after, because we'll need the information put in our developers' agreement. It's just before it gets recorded, we have to have the developers' agreement.
I think we as a city want to know what we're going to do when we get that final. I think that's just us, we diligently.
Yeah, and then within the developers' agreement, we have the lighting plan, we have landscaping, are those things incorporated in it now? Because I don't remember from the last time.
We don't have any landscaping licenses, we
Yeah, what do you mean by landscaping?
Anything. It's a question.
It's more lighting.
I mean, you know, you have
You said you wanted streetlights, so I was going to incorporate that in there, make sure that's
And landscaping, if we have water retention, means
Do you guys have a plan for streetlights?
Yes.
That would be something to talk to the engineers, because we've got a new draft, well, it's draft at this point, right? We don't have it approved at this point. We're in the process of approving a standard light, a
Less fancy pole.
Okay, that's a technical term.
I don't know what poles were designed.
Right.
But the plans actually have been given to Kent on the whole, everything. Brent, you're still with them?
I, I guess I would make a motion to approve preliminary plat. I think if you, if, if planning and zoning has already incorporated all the changes and recommendations, recommended changes, right?